Okay, we're calling our June 4th, 2025 Board Meeting to order. Will you please call the roll?
Ms. Segwin.
Here.
Ms. Kristoffen.
Here.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Here.
Mr. Hauser.
Here.
Mr. Parker.
Here.
Okay, I'll rise for our Pledge Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is like a classroom.
I know, that was nice.
It is just us.
What was it? Oh, yeah.
Nice to hear the young people's voices.
Yeah, it did sound nice. All right, I'll introduce our board members. We have Mr. Brent Parker, to the far right, Mr. Mike Gebhardt, to my right, Vice President, Mrs. Annie Karstoffen, in the beautiful green, Mr. Len Hauser, next to her, Ms. Anne Slush, our Superintendent, and Colleen Abhol, our Treasurer. All right, moving along, it looks like we have a presentation, sports performance year one recap.
Yes, Jay Banyez, you can come up, Jay. If you remember, we began this roll to help us get where we needed to get in the athletics, as far as many different things and pieces and parts, but Jay's been a great, great addition, and he wanted to give a little recap.
First of all, thank you guys for having me. I have some analogies that I want to go through, recap kind of the sports performance and kind of what that looked like, the why, what we measured, and show you guys the data, and then kind of what our year two plans are and behind, so if you look on the... How do we go to the next slide here?
Does it... Can you tap it? Is it working if you tap it? No? Yeah, probably just need to...
All right, so first, a lot of people I do want to thank, so you guys should go to the next page there now. And I'm going to miss some people here, but first of all, the Board and Ann for the opportunity to serve our student athletes, and the investment that you guys made, not only in my program, but out to our kids, so, and I think our kids would kind of echo that same appreciation. So, coaches and trainers, you know, just constant communication, constant feedback. We all want the same thing, pretty much just making our athletes better, opportunities for them to grow and get better as students and as athletes as well. Heather Beck, who last, she came here to Sports Day, which I appreciate. She's been a great sounding board for me, a person to turn it on. Is that better?
Yes.
My fault. All right, like I was saying, Heather, she does an amazing job coordinating all our athletes. She goes above and beyond. It's been great working with her. She's kind of helped piece together some of the logistics of scheduling, so in year one, she was a huge help too, so. Coach Hamilton, again, another person who's here to kind of support our, support myself as well as our athletes. He's an Alaria alum, so he was our teachable record, and he was in the classroom and in the weight room with us, and he does two things very, very well that our kids desperately need. He provides a sense of consistency every single day, a sense of professionalism. He's there all the time, and then second, he does a great job of kind of keeping our kids with high standards, and something that if we want to grow as an academic and as an athletic program, high standards is kind of where we get to. So, I appreciate you, Coach Hamilton, for being here, and obviously for being here throughout the course of the year. It allowed our kids to get credit throughout the course of the year, so they can take our sports performance class and count towards eligibility and whatnot, so keep going. And then lastly, I'd like to thank our student athletes. I don't even need a mic if that's better, because we asked them to do something they've never done before. So, we asked them to change their habits, change kind of what they do, their thought process, as well as their physical actions every single day, and they did a great job. And I'll kind of go through how we know they did a great job, and kind of the data to support that, so if we go to the next slide now, okay. So, when our sports performance class, for those who didn't know, it's kind of our speed and strength class during the day, like a lot of our school models have kind of adopted. It allows us to provide year-round, quality, consistent training, so knowing our kids doing it during the day is the best for them with attendance purposes, allowing them to obviously babysit their brothers and sisters, help out around the house, allows them to get a job, but it also allows them to earn a credit during the day, so they can get their training every single day, during the day, earn a credit, counts towards graduation, counts towards eligibility, and it's a free and it's an equitable resource that all our kids have the opportunity to do now. So, when I look at this sports performance recap, I'm talking about the class specifically, but we also have after-school options for our early college ABS and other EHS students, so it's kind of our way to, again, kind of get on par with all the other schools in the area, and I just wanted to give you guys a recap kind of on your investments, so I felt like that was important that I come here and do so. Thank you. All right, so when we look at our KPIs, those are like our key performance indicators, which we look at data. We talk about data all the time in like the academic world, but we want to make sure it's not only like efficient, but it's effective. Those are things that we look at an athlete, and we want to make sure that they're good in those skills, so we have our max strength, our power, our explosive, and our speed and agility, and one of the main things that we do is we want to make sure that we're doing things that our kids see value in and helps them in their sport. So, when we track data, it's meaningful, and this year, we focus predominantly on one and a little bit of two, because when you're building the program, you obviously have to hone in on technique, you have to hone in on the basics, and allows us to build a good foundation for years to come, so just kind of want to report that. So, we had 137 student athletes who participated throughout the entire year, so when we look at kind of evaluating a program, we want to make sure that we look at the ones who did it from the start all the way to the finish, not a kid who did it for a week or so and transferred or dropped, or didn't play his sport, or transferred in halfway. We look at the data for the, to see how good the program it was. So, three KPIs that we checked, again, key performance indicators, we did our bench for our max strength, for our upper body, our squat for our lower body, and then our vertical jump for power and explosiveness throughout the whole course of the year. We tracked other things, but again, just for the start and the beginning of the year, kind of where we're at. And out of 137 student athletes, we had all 137 student athletes improve in all three aspects in our KPI, which is an outstanding feat to not only them, but it's kind of our program, what we're trying to do, so. If we go to the next slide, we kind of look at it in like a bar graph visual for you guys. At the start of the year, we only had five student athletes who had a 30-plus inch vertical, only five, and we only had 31 kids who could bench 135 pounds, and we only had 33 athletes who can squat 185 pounds. For those who are kind of familiar with those metrics, those aren't super lofty goals, but it's a good benchmark to kind of see where we were at. You know, the first thing you do in terms of the assessment is you have a pre-assessment, and then you kind of gradually go like formative and summative assessments. Our summative assessment, at the very end of the year, we had 28 student athletes able to jump 30-plus inches, which is a 460% growth, which is a good key indicator in our program that's working and we're doing the right things. We had 83 athletes be able to bench 135 pounds, which is 167% increase, and then we had 79 athletes able to squat 185 pounds, which is again, another 139% growth. So, if we're talking about investments, those are obviously good numbers, a good source of the program, and we like kind of where things are headed. The nice thing too that I like to kind of piggyback is now for this next year, we don't start where the red bars are at, we start similar to where those black bars are at. So, each year, we're able to kind of continue to stack and stack, and you know, year one will obviously present problems and issues, and year two will too as well, but at least the, you know, the base floor is slowly rising with our athletes. Towards the end of the year, we started seeing a lot of our sophomores and freshmen equally as strong as our juniors and seniors, which is a good thing to have, so it was really cool to see, and again, if we're looking at kind of assessing a program, we want to see these numbers the way they are. So, if we look at year two and kind of beyond, and what we want to focus on, and kind of where we're headed, just to keep, you know, things transparent, one of the big things is year two for me begins in the summer. We have dedicated summer programs for every single one of our sports teams, and opportunities for our kids to train throughout the course of the year, again, free and equitable. It allows us to provide something that T3 provides, but at, does free 99 cost for our kids, and we're going to focus predominantly on speed and agility and those other KPIs that we didn't get to. The second thing that I looked at a lot, again, if we're looking at data, the start of the year, we had 147 requests, so only 147 of our athletes wanted to kind of participate in year one of this program, you know, reading the course description, seeing what they signed up for, kind of accepting a challenging task daily, and now we have 221 requests for the 2024-2025 school year, about a 50% growth increase. And to me, that just shows like word of mouth is like a good thing. It's like, oh, like, why are you left after school? Be like, oh, where's the rest of our team at? Oh, they have sports performance, they just take it during the day, and then it allows them to do things past their normal school hour, so to me, that was a really good sign that not only we're doing the right things with the previous numbers, but the kids see value in it too. So, then you look at our retention after year one, so obviously we graduate our seniors or those who transfer or whatnot leave, but our freshmen, sophomore, and juniors, if you look at those group that were in sports performance, and then their request to sign up for it in the next year, we're at about 95%, so about two to three kids didn't want to take it after taking it for a full year, which to me shows that they see value in it, and they liked it, and they want to do it again. So, again, being able to grow as a program and being able to retain in, you know, 2024, 2025 is a good sign that we're obviously headed in the right direction. One of the things that we're going to focus on also in year two is the nutrition piece, because we kind of, again, we track their body weight, we track their height, we track their wingspan, their bench, their squat, we track all this stuff, and the one metric that we kind of see didn't really change a lot was their weight, and that's unfortunately one thing that, you know, I can't go home and I can't cook for them, or I can't do things for them, but what we can do is we can provide information and we can provide resources for them. So, I've already reached out to multiple nutritionists, and we already have a plan in place to provide meal plans, grocery shopping list, all these things to, again, just provide not only kids, but parents' information on what to eat, when to eat, and why to eat. So, we're again, trying to just grow from year one to year two. I think that's a, any program or any person wants to do that, so we're constantly reflecting and trying to add better things, so. And the last thing, with help of Mrs. Sorka back there, again, appreciate him being there, dedicated middle school programs. So, we did a lot of it this year, a little bit, kind of in like the later hours of the day, like that 5:30 time. We'd like to get a little more closer to their school hours, but we had dedicated football, volleyball, boys' basketball, girls' basketball, and we're slowly starting to build more and more programs for the middle school, so one thing we'd like to do, you know, down the road is get sports performance at the middle school level, because if we can continue to do that, it's just going to slowly, slowly build a culture and kind of head in the right direction, so. Again, just want to thank you guys for your time. I thought it was important for me to come here, give you guys kind of a recap on year one, kind of see what you guys, you know, signed up for or invested in, so if you guys have any questions or anything you'd like to ask or add or whatnot.
That's a great presentation.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
That's awesome.
Do you have any stats, just boys and girls participating, gender breakup?
Yeah, so I don't know those numbers off the top of my head, but I can give you a pretty good estimate, is that our initial request of the 147 was probably like 75% males, and then our 221, we're seeing more and more females sign up for our sports class, which I think that's one big thing too as well, is that you're seeing the female athletes obviously buy in and be committed to it, as well as trust and kind of believe in what we're doing, so. That was a good number for me, the 221, that I'm like, okay, we're getting more and more different sports to joining too as well. Obviously, it's something we can't make them do, but we can only provide them the information and allow them the chance to do it, so.
And next year, you're going to have seven classes?
Yeah, so we, a good problem to have is that we're, it's in order accommodate the 221 request, we're adding more class periods, so we can just be more efficient and effective with our time to accommodate the kids who want to do it. So, the goal is to obviously do it before, the long-term goal would be able to do before school, whole year, after school, get 300-plus athletes training during the day for those kids who, and it costs them $0, so it's a, it's a great opportunity, great resource, and like I said, it's been an honor to serve these kids, and I appreciate you guys instilling that belief in me and giving me the opportunity to speak with you guys, so.
Thank you.
Well, the kids will leave in it. I talked to the girls' wrestling team at one of their meets and asked them, how's it going, and they all were very happy with it, they liked what they were getting from it, to improve them on the math, so when you have results coming out, more and more people want to be part of it, so thank you.
It's always, it's always good to hear that, thank you, I appreciate it.
With the weight, with the weight fluctuation, is that with some kids a weight gain, some kids a weight loss, what's the fluctuation?
So, that's the tough thing too to track. I mean, I think about two kids in particular that were offensive lineman for us in football, who dropped like 50 to 60 pounds, I mean, I mean, Mike Alvarez is one of our, one of our kids, and he dropped a lot of weight, intentionally, he wanted to lose weight, so like, it's tough to track body weight all the time, because everybody has different goals, but for me, it's, it's the level of like, all right, you weigh this much weight, now you're getting stronger, like, are we adding good weight, are we adding bad weight? And again, it's, it's an opportunity, we don't make all our kids weigh in, but it's just another metric that, they like, they like to see the stats, they like to know what they're doing and why they're doing it, and if it works, so.
Yeah, that's good, that's very good.
If he dropped that much weight, is he still a lineman?
Yeah, he's a wide receiver now. He's long graduate, I think week 10 was his last time he thought of himself as a lineman, so, yeah.
Do you find more students in certain sports?
Yeah, so like, you look at our 221 request, and the nice thing is providing the after-school opportunity for them, it kind of gives them like a little bit of a taste or a test of working out in general, or just even me or myself as a person, just kind of buying into that, so we're seeing more and more sports teams sign up for it. Again, it's something we can't make them do, but the goal ultimately is just the standard and expectation that all our athletes like, not only like feel they should train, but want to train, you know what I'm saying? But, yeah, we're seeing more and more sports and ball, which is a good thing, yeah.
That's great, awesome.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jay.
Awesome.
All right.
Need some help with that bag, like?
They need Mike. What? Didn't drink it.
We're good. I just been silly.
I'm not sure. He wants somebody to be a babe.
No, I just been silly.
He wants somebody to be a babe.
So, you don't need Mike.
I have a big water. We do, okay. All right, so visitors' comment section, but we have no visitors' comments. I'll just read the first couple sentences here. For the record, the school board encourages and appreciates citizen-interested meetings of the Board of Education. Normally, the board will meet twice during the month and will make accommodations to allow public participation. Persons wishing to address the board for up to five minutes may place their name on a sign-in sheet, indicate the topic they wish to address, or make a written request to the Treasurer's office one week in advance of the board meeting to speak up to 10 minutes. Okay, meeting minutes, the meeting minutes from the May 21st meeting have been posted. Do we have a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
Madam Treasurer, please call the roll.
Ms. Kristoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Mrs. Segwin?
Aye. Board of Education items. I don't have anything, does anyone have anything for this part? Nope. All right, Treasurer action items.
Okay, to acknowledge and express appreciation for the following donations, ELEAD Pride Parent Group donated $5,809 for a basketball hoop for their playground, thank you for that.
Thank you.
And I also have to approve the board insurance rates and the COBRA rates for July 1st, 2025 as follows, and that's all that I have.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the Treasurer's item?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Will you please call the roll?
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Ms. Kristoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mrs. Segwin?
Aye. Motion carries. Could we, could we have, I don't know if this would be the section, but could we have a quick update on the flag poll?
Yes, we have ESP here. Brian, do you want to tell them?
Sure, I've been in contact with the city and the Veteran Services Commission, Mr. Smith, who is here, his name is Jacob.
Jacob Smith, yes.
We're on track to get the poll, we checked with city zoning and city building ordinance. Just to get the installer out to make sure that the location we want to put it is good by you and good by them, that we can get a mutual view on where this is going to go, and then I think we'll be ready hopefully by the next June board meeting for you to, if you so choose, accept the nomination of the flag.
Good job.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
All right, Treasurer report.
The expulsion hearing first. Treasurer, to appoint board members.
Yes, it's going to be Brett Parker and myself.
Thank you, and then representatives are the other three for the hearing that will be on Wednesday, June 25th at 4:00 PM. Just need a motion for that.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Parker?
So moved, second?
You so moved and seconded.
Well, I thought you motioned it, so I was going to second it.
Yeah, it was good. You motioned, okay.
Ms. Kristoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mrs. Segwin?
Aye. Okay, now the Treasurer report.
All right, no fun report, sorry.
No report. All right, now we're moving on to Superintendent action items.
All right, quite a few contracts as always this time of year, thank you, Mrs. Blatt. First of all, the field trip for the soccer at Ashland, that we then have the Jaworski Physical Therapy contract for both summer and next school year, the extended school year program with the two professional support, the inter-agency agreement for the 25-26 school year, STEPS education for the 25-26 school year, the contract with the Alaria Amherst Taxi for next school year, Life Care Wheelchair Transportation for the 25-26 school year, the ESC of Northeast Ohio Achievement Centers for Children for next school year, Lorin County Board of DD contract for next 25-26 school year, Cleveland Hearing and Speech 25-26 and 26-27. Okay. Ones for interpreters.
And ones for audio.
And ones for audio, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Also, the suburban transportation contract is listed below, mental health, this is the Myers Board Agreement for our SEL personnel, and then purchase of Chromebooks for next year, as we have a cycle where we replenish, and then we have a stipend for the summer robotics camp to the following individuals, and that concludes my action items.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the Superintendent's action item?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Ms. Kristoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
I hear.
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Mrs. Segwin?
All right, next we have Personnel action items. Shall I go ahead? All right, I do have some announcements or introductions at the end, but I'll go through all of them first. First of all, we have a resignation of certified staff members listed below, we have the appointment of the following certified administrative staff, we have, to approve the appointment of the following certified staff as detailed below, to approve the appointment of the following EHS student worker for the PAC, to approve the payment of up to five days for employee's daily rate for training and transitioning, to approve the supplemental contracts for the following district certified and classified staff, we have a couple pages here, to approve the following athletics supplemental contracts as listed below, to approve the payment of up to five hours per day for the period of June 11th through June 27th for curriculum rate tutoring sessions for St. Jude, to approve the resignation of the following classified staff member, to approve the appointment of the following classified staff as listed below, can tell we're in hiring season, right, to approve the termination of the following classified staff member, to approve the continuing contract for the following classified staff beginning the 25-26 school year, to approve the two-year limited contract for the following classified staff, and to approve the one-year limited contract for the following staff.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the Personnel action items recommended by the Superintendent?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Treasurer, please call the roll.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Ms. Kristoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Mrs. Segwin?
Aye. Motion carries.
All right, if I could introduce a few of you, we have a lot of people out there, but first of all, I'll start with in order on the page 11. First of all, we have, as you know from a previous board meeting, Carrie Pope is retiring after 37 years, and we didn't look far, she was just, just down the road, or the hall, shall I say, Carrie Circone, who has been one of our bricks, our behavior specialists at the middle school level, so Carrie, if you'd stand, she is our new special education supervisor, so thank you. She has a great background, and we're very lucky to have Carrie. Also, one of our behavior specialists at the high school, Molly Newbauer, is going to replace, it's kind of a side-out rotate, yes, it's your mommy, side-out rotate, as you know, with Courtney coming up, Angie Alacron is going to move over to the academic side of the associate principal, and Molly, who has been at the high school for two years working in the behaviors, is going to be the associate principal on the Student Services side, so many of the things that she'll be working with, she has already been working with, and it'll be less of a learning curve, so I always say, we train the best, so to keep people in-house that know what's going on, and she's done a wonderful job. We're going to be having a presentation actually, if I, on a side note, coming up, but our discipline is way down, the data is way down in numbers, and we're celebrating that, and a lot of these people have a lot to do with that, so Molly Newbauer, our new associate All right, I'm going to start with you, Brooklyn, because this one makes me so, so happy and smile, not that the rest don't, but she just graduated from Alaria High a week ago? A week ago today, yeah, and Brooklyn is going to school to be a teacher, and she's going to work with us while she's going to school at Ashland, right, as a parapro. So, very excited to have Brooklyn as part of our staff, now officially, yes. She's got a great singing voice, too. And then certified positions, we have Mr. Sean Coglin, he's going to be at Northwood in English Language Arts. Alexis Meyer, 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 she's going to be fifth grade science at Northwood Middle. And then this name you might know, Dan Gunder, he's one of our assistant basketball coaches, but he's been teaching down the street in Wellington, and he's made his way to be a full pioneer, a pioneer, not just a part-time pioneer, so welcome, Dan. He's going to be third grade teacher at Eastern Heights, and they're very excited to get a male teacher in elementary, that doesn't happen very often, so very excited to do that. All right, let me make sure I didn't forget anyone, someone, anyone, did I forget anyone? I don't think so, is that everyone? All right, I think, I think that's it, so all I have, would you like me to start with the Superintendent's report?
Sure.
Okay, so the next, let me see here, part, well, we made it, another great school year, and couldn't be more proud of the work we did all year, and just a shout out to the whole staff and the team, as I call them, the Pioneer Family, for doing what they do each day for our students, again, couldn't be more proud of the work they do. This Friday at 2:00 PM at the high school, Jazir, who throws discus, I believe, is going to be leaving for the state competition, he's a sophomore, and he made it to state in the discus, so we're very excited, there's going to be a send-off with the police car and everything else, Mayor Brubaker helped us with that, so.
He plays basketball too, doesn't he?
He plays on the JV team, yes, he's a wonderful student, and from what Mr. Banyez told me... And from what Mr. Benya has told me, he just, at the combine, they're doing these combines where colleges come in and see the kids, he was given some pretty big shout-outs from three Division I schools, so he's quite the athlete.
Sophomore?
Sophomore, quite the athlete. He's very tall. I think he's like 6'5".
Oh, wow.
But, yeah. All right, and also Special Olympics on Friday the 13th. It's a good Friday the 13th, though. At 7:30 in the morning, they're headed to the state competition, and we're going to do a send-off at the high school, correct, Mrs. Blatt?
Yes.
Okay. I can't see out of these glasses, it's for reading.
Do we have a time for that?
7:30 AM.
Okay.
For the early birds. And they always love it when we come and cheer them.
There's eight athletes heading to state.
Wonderful, wonderful. So is that Mr. Corp taking?
And then Ashley School, Tuesday, a special division during down at Eastern Heights Elementary, are the two names.
Awesome, awesome. And that is it? We're just, like I said, we're busy hiring and.
You're allowed to be lax when you're home.
That's great. Four boys, I, I'm out.
Mom, are you sure you have time for this? This job?
So, and that's it. Again, we had a great end-of-year admin meeting today and lots of good stuff planned for the upcoming year, and, and it's exciting, very exciting. Good things happening in Alaria.
Okay, is that, is that all?
That is it from me.
Okay. Board of Education items. Membership renewal, to approve the membership of the Coalition slash VHO EdChoice voucher litigation. To approve the second reading of the following board policies, and that is it. Do we have a motion to approve the Board of Education items as presented?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Treasurer, please call the roll.
Mr. Gephardt?
Aye.
Ms. Kristofen?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Mrs. Seigwin?
No.
I'm quite different today, aren't I?
Yeah, I was.
Okay. Issue of emergency levy. The recommended action is going to be to approve a resolution, wait, no, to submit to the electors of the school district at the election to be held on November 4, 2025, the question of an additional levy in excess of the 10 mil limitation for the purpose of providing for the emergency requirements of the school district in order to raise the total amount of $6,381,390 each year, expected to result in a county auditor millet certification of approximately 4.9 mils for a period of 10 years, which, if approved, would be first collected in calendar year 2026. Do we have a motion to approve a resolution to submit to the electors of the school district the question of levying an additional tax pursuant to Section 5705-194 to 5705-197 of the Revised Code? So moved. Do we have a second?
Second.